And we will start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a volunteer for our mega statement.
The mega result, all students will graduate prepared with the knowledge, skills, attitudes, and behaviors necessary to achieve their personal goals and make a positive impact in the world.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jasper, for that. Public session or public comment session, 4.01, welcome and guidelines for public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for either agenda or non-agenda related comment?
Excuse me?
We do, and I think I've seen you, or Miss Inzurillo?
Three times, well, yeah.
What time? So I think you're familiar with the rules, so I'll just go ahead.
Yeah, and I'm, I have to say, I'm very, very sad that I don't have more people here, but I think everybody just feels a little deflated. So just, you know, take this, I may have typed it a little emotionally, so. Thank you for your time. This isn't the first time that I've addressed this board regarding compensation for support staff, urging you to give us a fair and respectable wage. I have been to all the meetings that the compensation committee has been invited to. I have heard the promises, seen the smoke and mirrors, and witnessed the outcome that is quite insulting to those of us that have given years of service to the district and the students. In looking at the proposal you will be voting for, on the surface, it looks like you see our worth. On closer examination, it shows how you really value us. At the beginning of this process, we were told how we were the backbone of the district, and we have deserved a large bump for years now. Yet, more recently, I have heard it said that the only reason for the proposed increase is for optics to attract new staff. When you dive a little deeper, you can see that you truly don't appreciate the longevity, experience, or loyalty of a lot of your employees. The final proposal that didn't need eight months to build reflects this. For me personally, my wage doesn't change from the first proposal to the final proposal, and my annual increase will be about 20 cents less a year than it has been for the years that I've been here. As I've said before, on a couple occasions, I love this job. I love the kids, I love the team. I used to tell people how supported I felt by administration, and I don't feel I can do that right now. I really thought this was going to go differently, and how foolish was I? I will continue to be excellent at my job, as will my cohorts, because we love what we do, and we have pride in our work. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Inzurillo. For the record, can I read your address? Because I don't know if you started off by that.
I did not, you may.
19524115th Avenue, Jim Falls, Wisconsin, 54748. Thank you. All right, we don't have anybody else signed up for any public comment, so. Number five is Showcase School, under 5.01, recognition of 2023-2024 Athletic Co-Curricular and Extracurricular Activities. Mr. Mike Thompson, our activities and athletic director.
Well, thank you. Feels like it wasn't too long ago, we were here last June, talking about wrapping up last year, and it shows you how quickly the life of a school year can be. But thanks again for your time. We try to capture things in this presentation. Believe me, we can't capture everything in the presentation, but these are just kind of snapshots of some of the highlights and the fun things that our students were able to do and partake in in a school our size to come and present in June. With all the things, we would probably be here till tomorrow morning. Forgive me if I've missed anything, and believe me, we celebrate as much as we possibly can when it comes to all the cool things our students are doing. So we'll kind of, it'll go kind of fall, winter, spring, and then we'll kind of wrap it up with some cool, interesting facts at the end. With our women's golf, they had the lowest score in program history, and a couple of students, you can see Sarah and Addie right there, which they'll be returning next year as seniors. They qualified for a sectional meet. Took fifth overall at the Big Rivers Conference Meet, which is, doesn't sound like a lot, but we're really building that in the right way. And if you know anything about golf, it's very difficult to be consistent at that. So Mr. Morgan Hansen is our head coach, and he does an excellent job with recruiting and retaining students that are just trying it, but also students such as Addie and Sarah that are pushing themselves to a higher level. Of course, we have our always excellent marching band that we have in 23-24. We did our obviously typical, typical home shows, we had our home event, Musical Long Chippewa, and then of course, we went, took a trip down to Whitewater as well to perform at a more of a state-level competition. And if you're able to go to it this year, it's pretty cool. Ninety students is down a little bit from years past, but it's pretty, pretty amazing, and I'm hoping all of you can come to a competition this, this year, whether it's Musical Long Chippewa or at a halftime of a home football game. We had two state qualifiers, Ben and Jordan, they are both have graduated from the class of 2024, but they ran themselves to the state tournament. Ben, multiple times throughout his career, but Jordan, this was her ticket punch, her senior year, and this was a goal for her. Don't know about the history of the picture, but there's a, I don't know, is that Pikachu? I don't know what that is, but either way, pretty fun time they had at Menominee to qualify.
Impressed that you know that's a Pikachu, though.
Is it? I don't know.
It's not, I work at the middle school.
Squish, Squishmallow? Yeah, it's a stuffed animal. All right, moving on. We had our Big Rivers Conference Champions Chi-Hi volleyball team. We hosted a regional final, and that's not easy to do in our, in our regional area, our sectional area. And to be on top of the Big Rivers Conference, we knocked River Falls from the top of the perch these last couple of years. Unfortunately, one of our top players sprained an ankle in the regional final, and actually, River Falls is the one that toppled us when we went to the state tournament a year prior. Don't, you know, believe me, it's not a letdown by any means, just kind of the nature of competitive teams. If you follow the Chi-Hi football team, we did qualify for a spot in the playoffs. We got an eight seed, and if you know anything about the WIA playoffs, they put you one through eight. So the eight team is the underdog, we went over to Hudson, and Hudson's worst nightmare, because we went over there and beat them at a kind of a clock control game. And it was, it was a really, really cool experience for some of our kids. Coach Rakovic brought up some freshmen to practice and be the scout team for the other, for the varsity team, which is basically tackling dummies, let's be honest with it. But he also rewarded those kids with being on the sideline at Hudson, and so they experienced a pretty big upset victory. We return quite a few of our skill position players next year for that team, but we graduate a lot of seniors that were big contributors of that. Ten-time state championship Chi-Hi equestrian team, they ended up going down to Madison and bringing it home. I will say, it is getting a little bit more difficult every year, and Kara Schuler is a little nervous to put her, you know, put, put her foot there with, as far as like guaranteeing state championships. But of course, ten times, that's the word dynasty right there. And the cool thing is, is Kara and our team is doing an excellent job of helping other communities come up with the equestrian teams to try to crow the sport. And that's, that's a kind of a big step. When you're on top of the mountain, people want to know how you did it, and they're trying to get other communities to join the equestrian world.
And for the Pure Water Days Parade, Kara is going to be, you know how we had Coach Rakovic last year in the back of the balcony, no?
Yeah.
This year, it's going to be Kara and followed by the equestrian team.
Very good, very good idea, very good idea. Who's going to follow with the shovel, but that's not going to be me.
It's Jenny's job.
Perfect.
You know, actually, Pete Lehman does.
Ah, Pete? No, Pete.
He did it last year, I watched him do it last year.
Pete would do it again, that would be awesome. With our women's swim team, Evelyn Arnold was the person that put the team on her back, and she ended up broken, broke a school record in 500 free, and she qualified in another event at a tough sectional, I believe it was in Hudson. We go to the Hudson sectional, and it is a fast sectional, a tough one to qualify for. So she punched her ticket and was able to swim at the state meet to, to swim for Chippewa Falls. We did sign four Division One slash Division Two athletic scholarships. As you can see there, Sophie Robinson and Paige Steimets, both going in volleyball. Sophie's going to Southern Illinois Edwardsville at the Division One level, and Paige is going to Southwest Minnesota State at the Division Two level. McKenna Johnston is signing for, with Winona State for softball, and Easton Bob is signing with St. Thomas, which is now Division One for baseball. Cool thing about that, the fun fact, I know you can read that, but we averaged the GPAs, and it's still 3.945, and they, they earned a combined 29 varsity letters throughout their careers. Pretty cool statistics when you break that down. Jumping into the winter, we have Eric Patrowski qualify for the 500 and the 100 free in the swim events. And if you know anything about Eric, and now he's going into the military, he's a very selfless person, so it was, it was very cool to have him take on a leadership role for some of our younger student athletes. He did have an individual goal of qualifying for the state tournament, but he also had a team goal to show the younger kids how to do that. So Eric is a fantastic leader. We had wrestling the year prior, we had two qualifiers to go to sectional. This year, we had seven. We didn't get anybody to state meet, but we did have seven of those that punched their tickets, so you can see the growth there. Another thing we did with wrestling is we brought them from, oh, we were renting space downtown, and we brought them back up to the school, we put some wall mats on the wall, so it was a more safer environment. So getting our students to compete in our facilities shows that it was, it was obviously quite a bit better, we didn't have to waste time driving, or, you know, putting kids in the car, you know, on a bad winter night. So I think that's a direct reflection of the, the coaching and the commitment that those student athletes had. Robotics, which Mr. Walter, I know he's not here, but we'd like to thank him for his years and years and years of service, dedication to robotics. He finally got it to a point where he feels, he feels comfortable handing it off to other volunteers. He's still going to be around, if you know anything about Mr. Walter, he'll always, he'll always be around, and he'll always be to be able to help and be a resource. But he was able to lead this group of fantastic students. They had big aspirations, because they were really, really close to going to Worlds the year prior. They didn't quite perform to their standards, but they performed very well up in, with another successful season. One of our trademark teams this, this past year, it was the last couple of years, I should say, is our gymnastics team. They won every single meet throughout the year, which is pretty unheard of if you know anything about, well, gymnastics, but competitive sports in general. Big Rivers Conference champs, they had, we hosted the sectional, we were the sectional champions. They went to the state tournament as a team. We also have individual and team qualifiers in, in a sport like gymnastics, you would have that. In a fourth-place team finish, the year after, we had a third-place team finish, and we had a third-place podium with Ava Krista, a sixth-place all-around Ava Krista. We return almost everybody, so I will ask you, if you can make it to a gymnastics meet next year, they are throwing some fantastic skills, and they are a hard-working group of student athletes. So if you can get there, the gymnastics group is one to come and watch. With Harmonix, it's always one of the bigger ones, it's always a big buzz when, when we're there. You can see it's an Andy Warhol, Warhol theme, when you watch it, it all comes together. It's pretty cool, because I get to see kind of the snippets as they're working in the auditorium, and I'm there, and I'm like, whoa, this, I don't even know what any of this means, but when it comes together in the competition, it's, it's very cool. But you can see 50 members, over 50 members. We walk into some schools, and they see us, the size of our team, and the skills of our team and our leaders. It's, it's a very awesome experience, and they put the Chippewa Falls on the map with Harmonix. Men's hockey was another high-level team this year, it was probably a team for the ages if you're in the hockey world. Big Rivers Conference champs and being undefeated in the Big Rivers is a very difficult thing. And obviously, they went to the state tournament, didn't turn out as they wanted it to, of course, but they had the Hockey Coaches Association Player of the Year and Coach of the Year. You can see on the right, there's a picture of both Jackson Hoym, who graduated, and Coach Parker, who graduated as well, in his own right, and he retired, and he's moving off into the sunset there. But that men's hockey team was an excellent team, and by that, I mean, we had some really good individuals on that, but there was, it was a really good, deep team that really got along together, so that's why I think it was so magical. They didn't really have a lot of speed bumps along the way, because they put their pride aside. As you can see, with, with the forensics group, they got a top 5% excellence in speech 2024. We believe that is the first time in school history that's ever happened, and 300 schools competed at that, and we're one of 15 schools to be able to get that. And you can see, maybe the picture doesn't do it justice, but that's a pretty big forensics group, and Ms. Karen Kaler has really grown that group, and is a very confident speaking group. And it's a little intimidating to me as well, when they, when they go up there and speak with such confidence. We have both men's and women's track and field, and we did, this is our first year, we had a women's head coach and a men's head coach separately. It's always been one coach for 130 student athletes. And other schools do it where there's men's and women's, and this was, this was one of the reasons I think we had a very good turnout as far as students being able to be pushed to the next level. With the women's track and field, Big Rivers Conference champions for a second year in a row, they won the sectional as a team as well, and they had seven state meet qualifiers and a podium finish with triple jump with Ava Krista, who was on the podium for gymnastics as well, to show her superior athleticism there. And of course, men's track and field, we, we qualified the 10 state meet qualifiers. We did have a state championship relay team, you can see in the upper left, Jackson Lemay, Sam Abear, who returned this upcoming year, they'll be seniors. And then you have Carter Bovey and Ethan Faschingbauer, who graduated and literally handed off the baton, but are handing off the baton to somebody else. But they ended up winning a state championship. And, you know, in the 400 meter, I have a lot of respect, 400 meter, I think, is one that I want to, you know, get sick to myself watching those people run that, but it is an impressive, impressive run. We, we had a runner-up 400-meter run, Sam Abear individually as well, had a 400-meter run, and he was second in the state. He'll come back as the highest or fastest 400-meter individual in the, in the state next year, because the person that beat him graduated. And we had a runner-up relay team, the four-by-two, I believe, ended up being the runner-up in the entire state. Softball team, which had a large, excellent group of seniors. One of the most unique thing about the softball team, of course, they're very successful, and we know how successful they've been over the course of probably the 20 to 25 years. They had four, four, four-year starters on their varsity softball team. To have one four-year starter is pretty rare, we had four within that team. They ended up winning the regional, they went to the sectional final and lost a game, I believe it was one to nothing, an infield hit, scoring the run. So that's softball there, but excellent program, and will hopefully continue to reload into next year. I can see, as you can see, we had a pretty solid season for baseball. Mitch Steimets earned his 100th career win as a head coach of the Cardinals. Easton Bob was the pitcher of the year in the entire conference, and I believe he was second-team All-State as a pitcher. And you can see, we had five all-conference honors between first team, second team, and honorable mention. And of course, we had our esports team inaugural season. And in esports, if you know anything about it, it's competitive gaming, and it's fall, winter, and spring, and each season, there's a different game, and kids have to try out and make a team, and see who's going to play best as a team. And there's a JV team to, to help with that and to help develop students. Mr. Harry Kellogg at the high school took that over, and they won a state championship their first year of existence at the high school, which is obviously an awesome feat in its own. They went over to Wasaw, it was streamed online, there was thousands of viewers on there. So hopefully, that's the first of many positive things. And I think it's just another example of Chippewa Falls High School finding out things for kids to get involved in and become part of something else. With FBLA, they had to, they got to, I should say, host the state conference, a leadership conference in February, and you can see Gabby Peterson on the left. She teamed up with Marlena Lemay, who was, was our FBLA advisor and, and a business teacher at our school. And they hosted it at our school. It was a huge event, people from all over the state, but they did an excellent job leading that in, in February. With FFA, 28 members of that got to compete at the state competition. As you can see in the lower right, that's a huge number of students that, and that's just the kids that went to the state competition. And Sophie Kaler wrapped up a two-year commitment as a state-level officer. So we've had constant leadership at officer levels at, from Chippewa Falls, FFA, to serve at the state level, and that continues to keep us on the map for students that are interested in that. We have Gina Bergen and Caitlin Foster, our advisors for that, and they do really, really, really good job advocating for things such as FFA. Decca had an excellent year again, and that's another program. Heidi Warren's our advisor, she does such a great job of continuing to recruit students and, you know, to take the classes, see if they like it, you know, pushing them maybe a little bit out of their comfort zone, but really following their, their lead. But we had such an amazing time, and we had some kids that went to the international competition. So, you know, you have like the regionals and state, and, you know, they made it all to an international competition. And you can see that Josh Sworsky, far left on that picture, he placed third in the, in that competition. So there are some students that had some really cool business plans, and they had to pitch a business plan to people. They're doing these things at the high school level that, you know, people are doing at the professional level, and they're doing it with very, very good grace and professionalism. With HOSA, we have 17 members qualify for state in April, and we actually have one that's going to be at the national level later this month. And of course, they have team elections and officers to fill as people have graduated and beyond that. Skills USA had a banner year, I don't need to read all of that, but you can see the first-place finishers. We had a significant amount of students, and you can see, I think this is a direct reflection of our community's investment in our STEAM, in our STEM areas, with our technical education areas. Mr. Tim Pometlow and John Hebel really take a lot of time and put that effort in trying, trying to find which students are going to have their, their strengths in these certain areas. But definitely a banner year, we put a lot of students in first place, second place, third place, far more than we had in years past. Here's just a shout-out to our strength and conditioning group. We have, we had received, or I should say, we earned, a program of excellence for the National High School Strength and Conditioning, or Strength, Strength Coaches Association. And that's not easy to do, Becky Nettie and Derek Nettie applied for this, and it's a huge rubric, and they have to do quite a bit of behind-the-scenes work to make sure our, not only our weight room is safe and productive, but there's, there's, you know, all sorts of things that they had to put through on a checklist, and they're, they're very proud, and we are very proud to have that program of excellence from the national level in our weight room. You know anything about pound club? The, the students do certain lifts, and if they reach like 800 pounds, they get a shirt, and they get kind of posted on social media, 900, and so on and so forth. You can see some students that are just starting to take physical education classes and just starting to get into it, and they, they, they earn these shirts, and you can see the level of confidence go up. So it's, it's kind of like an inner competition with themselves and others to be able to safely lift and continue to get those lifelong skills. This is just kind of summing up what we've talked about. 26 all-conference first-team students, second team 32, honorable mention 34, three championship teams. You can see our state qualifiers on the left, hopefully, I highlighted most of them from earlier. And 10 students from class of 2024 that continue to, that will continue their athletic career, not only that will earn a scholarship, but also students that didn't earn a scholarship that will go compete at the collegiate level. And, and the bottom, I think it's, it's kind of cool to see when we have a student that earned, that played three sports all four years of high school. We had one of those students, Paige Steimets, and she came through, and she's a kind of a banner student athlete in our school. But she, she, not only did she earn a letter, or a participation award, but she earned a letter in 12 different seasons at the high school level, which is very, very difficult to do, if you know anything about three-sport athletes and having a high level of academics and a social life on top of it. She, she did that very, very well. And this is just kind of a scramble of all the community service projects, and we, we talk a lot about for the culture, and so we, we just took some blurbs on there just, just to remind all of us that, you know, when we do this, it's not only for Chippewa Falls High School, but it's for Chippewa Falls and our community to be able to give back at appropriate times. And I've noticed since my time as an activities director, I've noticed a lot of students that are taking the initiative to try to give back, and they come to me with ideas, and we kind of move things and finagle things to be able to have it work within our guidelines. But the students do a lot of the work, and it's, it's humbling to see that. When they have, when they know there's somebody in the community or a, a group in the community that could use our help, they jump on, on board with it, so. I believe that is it. So that was obviously a picture of our student section that, hey, we didn't break our bleachers, but probably came pretty close, but what an, what an awesome experience. But anyway, we did a lot of talking, if you have any questions, of course, feel free to ask those. But what a year, and looking forward to next year, of course, as well. And I'd invite any of you and all of you to any event, whether it's in the, in the auditorium, gym, outside, inside, doesn't matter, we'd love to have you as our guests.
Before the board asks any questions, one of the things I want to let the board know, Mike, is I've been an administrator now for 20-plus years, and over the course of the 20-plus years, I've had the opportunity to work with approximately eight or nine athletic directors along the way. So having just ended my fourth year in Chippewa Falls, I want everybody here, you know, the public and the board and staff members to know how greatly appreciated you are. The work that you've been doing, particularly over the last four years, that I've personally witnessed, are fantastic. You've got an exceptional mindset for an athletic director. What a lot of people don't know is the things that you wind up dealing with that are not public and should never be public, but you handle a lot of that with grace. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, that means a lot. I know that, I have a lot of support in this room and from administration, so it's not easy, but it's, it's appreciated, thank you for those words.
This presentation that you provide to us on a regular basis, you know, showcases, and like I said, I'm getting a little choked up right now, but put it all on those slides, realize all that goes on that you oversee, and then the things that people don't see that you deal with, you know, where you and I often have to work closely on some things nobody else wants to touch, you know? So, thank you. So Mike, thank you very much for your presentation. I'd like to get back to where we look at doing this three times a year if we can, not necessarily just to, to break it up a little bit, but because then we have the opportunity to get some of the kids in here like we did that one time. So when we have the, the fall sports, then we have a meeting, you know, sometime in December, and we have that group of kids that's up here and gets to have that recognition, that, that's a great feeling as well. It's just hard to do that in the summer, and it's hard, I think, for those spring kids, so. You know, maybe even bring the spring kids back, at least the ones that didn't graduate, and do it first thing when school starts. It's nice to have a bigger, bigger crowd and bigger, you know, have them here for recognition. They have this on, you know, our meetings are all recorded, so they can all look it up and see the accolades that we're giving.
How much of your success do you attribute to your sixth-grade basketball coach?
I think this is a loaded question.
It's not really loaded, he has one answer, isn't he?
It was a piece of the puzzle. Thank you for doing it.
As opposed to saying, well, who was that?
Oh, I know very well who it was, and I should apologize to him, but yes, thank you for that.
All right, Mike, anything else we can do to, to help make your job?
All right, Mike, anything else we can do to, to help make your job easier or anything that, that you need from us?
I don't think so. No, I, I, I really do enjoy coming in and bragging about what, what our students are doing. So if I can do it more, yes, I'd love to do that. But like I said, I, I think the, the, the thing that I would like to see is all of you coming to some events and seeing all the, the things our students are doing firsthand. So, yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, next is six point oh one, which is OE twelve learning environment and transportation. Members of the board have received the CEO's monitoring report on OE twelve learning environment and transportation. It's now the board's responsibility to consider the report as evidence of compliance in this area. Superintendent.
Yes, the Director of Student Services, Ms. Christine McMasters, has developed this monitoring report for our review. At this time, I will ask her to provide an overview of the report and remind her that she may even want to seriously reconsider future plane rides.
Thank you. Yes, and thank you for allowing me to be virtual tonight. I appreciate that. Tonight I'm presenting you with the Operational Expectation twelve, uh, learning environment and transportation. Maintaining a learning environment that is safe and respectful and conducive to student learning is our top priority for our district. As you can see from this report, we have many systems and supports in place for our students and staff to address the needs in the learning environment. I'm happy to say that all areas are in compliance. We have utilized an equitable multi-level system of support for the last fourteen years and we've seen continued growth year over year in the full implementation of each area as noted in the crosswalk data in this report. Each year, our, we refine our systems a little more and we look at ways to monitor our school climate and improve our caring culture. Positive behavioral interventions and strategies are utilized at the universal level for all students to support students in learning and understanding the behavioral expectations in the various learning environments, including classrooms, lunchrooms, hallways, bus lines, playgrounds, et cetera. We have looked at our T-charts. T-charts are charts that show classroom-managed behaviors versus admin-managed behaviors or office-managed behaviors. So we've looked at our T-charts through an equitable lens to focus on teacher-managed versus office-managed disciplinary behaviors and supports. Every building has social, emotional, behavioral coaches that support the caring culture work of the building and provide opportunities to support the behavioral expectations and needs of that building. All of these social, emotional, behavioral supports are in place to help students to focus on their academic, academic achievement and to meet their own personal goals. The better, to better support students with IEPs in the general education classroom, we have received a three-year, it's called ES three grant, to engage in the development of a coaching and support model for classroom teachers. We just completed year one of our grant and with that, we have trained our internal coaches, developed our core team, brought in professional learning, sent staff to conscious discipline training, shared evidence-based resources and modules, and we are finalizing a request for assistance process moving into next year. The district now has in place a specific bullying and harassment reporting system for parents, students, and staff to utilize reporting incidences of bullying or harassment. We have an online reporting tool on each school's webpage called SUSO. It's another reporting tool provided by the Department of Justice for any school threats, including harassment concerns. This link is also on every school webpage. As far as moving into the next school year and our commitment to improve, with the elimination of some key positions, the pupil, pupil services and curriculum department will be reviewing how the multi-level system of support, or MLSS, will continue at the building and district level. Professional development around social, emotional learning and restorative practices will take priority through the caring culture pillar and building and district-wide opportunities. Some roles and responsibilities will shift to others within our departments, but our overall commitment to a multi-level system of support will continue. Buildings will continue to prioritize a caring culture and promoting social, emotional learning and a sense of belonging through our support card process. While we have seen growth in these areas, there is still room for improvement and continued professional development to support staff as they implement evidence-based interventions and supports. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Ms. McMasters. At this time, I ask for the board's acceptance of the monitoring report.
Board members, any questions about the report itself before we vote to accept it as our own to discuss further?
I move to accept the OE twelve learning environment and transportation monitoring report as presented.
Motion by McKillop, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Fear, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. The OE twelve report is now ours to discuss further. Now, board members have any questions before we determine whether the district is in compliance using our policy motion language? There are no questions, I would look for a motion using our operational expectation policy motion language.
I move to accept the OE twelve learning environment, transportation, monitoring report as presented, that the district is in compliance as indicated in the report.
Okay, so specifically the motion is that the district is in compliance with OE twelve learning environment and transportation, correct? Motion by Fear, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Olson, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. The board finds that the district is in compliance with OE twelve learning environment and transportation. And you, Ms. McMasters, I don't know if you're here for the rest of the meeting or we can say goodbye to your flight or whatever it is that you're doing. Thank you. All right, number seven, board consent agenda. Seven point oh one, does any board member request removal of the board consent agenda items for separate consideration? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve the board consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Fear, is there a second?
Second.
Second by McKillop, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, the board's consent agenda is approved as presented. Next is the superintendent's consent agenda. Is there a request to remove from the superintendent's consent agenda any item for separate consideration? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion by McKillop, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Olson, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the superintendent's consent agenda is approved as presented. Matters reserved for board action, we have no items removed from the board's consent agenda and no items removed from the superintendent's consent agenda. So that brings us to nine point oh three, consideration of coherent governance committee meeting notes. And the chairperson is Ms. McKillop.
Yeah, so the coherent governance committee met on June nineteenth to develop the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five work plan. We kind of reviewed where the monitoring reports land, whether the administrators will have the data needed to provide us with the reports. You'll notice one we have, when we look at it next, we have it in August. That will be one that we're monitoring yet from two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four because we are waiting for data and then it's again in the spring, but that will be for twenty-four, twenty-five. So that might be kind of confusing, but then just kind of the normal, moving the November and December meetings away from the holidays.
Board members have any questions regarding the governance committee meeting? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve the June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four coherent governance committee meeting notes as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Olson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Fear, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, the June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four coherent governance committee meeting notes are approved as presented. Next is nine point oh four, consideration of the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five board annual work plan. It's again, it's board member McKillop.
Yeah, so this is, this is the plan that we discussed at the committee meeting that we're looking for board approval for monitoring our reports this year.
Board members have any questions? Pretty comprehensive work plan, thank you for putting the time to this, all members of that committee. Yeah, I was going to say with plenty of help, I'm sure, Angela. All right, if there are no additional questions, the recommended action is to approve the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five board annual work plan as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Fear, is there a second?
Second.
Second by McKillop, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five board annual work plan is approved as presented. Nine point oh five is consideration of policy committee meeting notes. And the policy committee meeting doesn't say who the chair is. Fear.
Yeah, we met to discuss the new policy on public notifications for school threats. Jeff had put it all together and checked it with the existing policies and then Neola and legal counsel. It was fairly straightforward when we got it, it all looked pretty good. Meeting went well. I don't think there was any major hiccups, so I think we're set to approve that. Are any questions?
Board members have any questions regarding the notes or the, let's see, is that a separate agenda item? Yeah, the policy, okay. Any questions about the meeting notes? All right, hearing none, I would look for a motion or the recommended action is to approve the June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four policy committee meeting notes as presented.
So moved.
By Olson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by McKillop, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the two thousand twenty-four, June thirteenth policy committee meeting notes are approved as presented. Next is the consideration of the adoption of policies surrounding public notification of school threats. Draft notification is in our board meeting notes. Board members have had a chance to review that before the meeting tonight. Any questions about this draft? Does anybody, the policy committee, want to go over anything? Any comments?
If I could, I, I do want to reinforce that this policy was vetted by Neola representatives, which does include their legal team. It was vetted by our district legal counsel and it was also vetted by our public safety committee because it does have ramifications associated with how our emergency management plan works. The way it is worded, in my mind, does allow for transparency and clarity in terms of how we as a district operate when confronted with student information and student conduct that requires confidentiality be applied. You know, I think it does help for our constituents to understand that our administrative team and our SROs and our counselors go through extensive trainings in regard to how these things are dealt with. As a matter of fact, we just had nine school employees go through a recent training to add to our team of individuals that can help make decisions surrounding these types of things. Based on Kirk's input, certainly, I'm confident that it meets all requirements associated with FERPO. It's in state statute surrounding student information and confidentiality. And I do recommend to the board that they do accept this policy and allow us to insert it into our other policies.
Board members have any additional comments, questions? Hearing none, the recommended action is to adopt the drafted policy surrounding public notification of school threats as presented.
I move to adopt the drafted policy surrounding public notifications of school threats as presented.
Motion by Fear, is there a second?
Second.
Second by McKillop, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the board has the drafted policy surrounding public notification of school threats as presented. Next, under nine point oh seven is consideration of compensation ad hoc committee meeting notes. And the compensation ad hoc committee meeting notes, members present would be board member Jasper Magowam and McKillop. Who is going to be presenting on the notes?
I think we had an opportunity to meet several times and we met in various ways. First of all, we met just to gather information to understand as a committee. We had a second session where we were able to gather a lot of input and really hear from a number of our employees who attended, who had been part of that committee, as with Ms. Inzarella Russell. Did you say your name, please?
Inzarella.
Yeah, Ms. Inzarella being part of it. It was in my head, it just wasn't coming out. And then we were able to meet again just to, to see if there were any shifts or any alignments, including a stop and go line chart, which will be presented tonight. And, you know, we did some, some work within ourselves to say where we thought we would land and that will be part of nine point oh eight essentially, presentation for Mrs. Stark.
Board members have any questions or comments? The recommended action is to approve the May twentieth, two thousand twenty-four and June twelfth, two thousand twenty-four compensation ad hoc committee meeting notes as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Olson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Fear, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the May twentieth, two thousand twenty-four and June twelfth, two thousand twenty-four compensation ad hoc committee meeting notes are approved as presented. Next, under nine point oh eight is the consideration of support classified hourly staff compensation. We have a presentation here, is this going to be by Ms. Stark? Yes, it is.
Thank you. So this, I do realize this has been kind of a long and emotional journey for a lot of people. I, I understand that. I do, the support staff group is the most varied group that the district has and they are, they are critical. There's no way that we could operate without them. And I, you know, the, the work here is an attempt to kind of honor the border-proof process and the requests that were made. Not all of those requests were moved forward. I know that the work did not meet expectations for everyone. But, you know, we, I tried to come up with something that was following the protocol and is fair and equitable, I guess, as it could be with that. So that's sort of just my, maybe little comment. This, you've, so a couple of these slides you've seen before. So the district has started with a four-year rotation. I would say going forward, this will be modified probably in some degree. There's been discussion about a three-year rotation. One of the things that happens is if, even though scales have annual increases, if they're not, if there's not an adjustment or calibration made other than every four years, sometimes that can create difficulties in itself, especially if people reach the top of the scale and they have been tapped. So I know that this is going to be looked at. I don't know as much about how it will end up and... And the other piece is, the, the whole compensation approach, um, as I get into it, I'll talk about the, the process the district uses with comparable districts and how that, um, mathematically works. And there's other approaches that can be made, and I think there'll be some time, um, as Sarah gets working in this role to think about that approach and some other possible approaches that could be used going forward. Uh, the timeline, which were, you know, um, this work was started, I believe, with Tim in September. And when I came on board, there were some drafts that had kind of been done. Looking at the new pay schedule, will start July first, and, um, for twelve-month staff, that starts there. Uh, for some staff who are less than twelve months, it'll start with their fall. This begins. So some of the prior work that has happened, um, comparable data was compiled, all of that was done before I got here. All of the categories were on a nine-step scale, and you'll see now it's a ten-step scale, and I'll explain that a little bit. There was input shared, um, of areas of concern, where people requested changes. And then a Board Ad-Hoc Committee was created, they had listening sessions with support staff with that compensation committee. And as you will see going forward, other options are presented for salary adjustment. So this is a little, this is maybe a lot tricky to read, but I, what I want to show you is that it, it helps because you can see kind of what compression looks like here. And so this example is for custodial staff. And when you look at it, if you look at, for example, ours is in the yellow, Triple Falls School District. When you look at, this is where, the yellow is where we were, where we are right now, before any kind of adjustment. So I'll just pick custodian, that's a, a common, um, piece. Our minimum was fifteen thirty-four, the maximum was twenty-one sixty-two. There's a fair gap there. And you can see all of the comparable districts, what their minimums were, what their maximums were. And one of the things I'll talk about, that I've talked about before, is we moved to the sixty-first percentile, and that created compression. I didn't, um, add the fifty-first percentile, but if you want to have a ballpark, if you look where the fiftieth percentile is, kind of going across, that'll give you the fiftieth to see. But if you look right underneath that sixty-first percentile, our bottom moves up to nineteen fifty-four from the fifteen thirty-four. The top moves from twenty-one sixty-two to twenty-two sixty-two. So that's what, I just wanted to share this so you have an example of when we talk about compression, what that means. The bottom moves quite a bit, the top moves a little bit, and that's true for many positions as you go through, some more than others. But that's, I think one of the things that, you know, we thought would be a good thing was moving to that sixty-first percentile because that would bump up pay overall, but it also created more compression. And so then there's less difference between who's the beginning person and who's, what's the maximum, what's the person that's been here the longest. Um, and then the other slides just show, so for example, this is for technology. And there, it, it happens there as well, not quite as dramatic, from twenty-three, thirty-three minimum to twenty-five. And then the maximum is thirty-two, um, eighty-nine, where our maximum is actually above the maximum there. Uh, this is clerical staff. And educational assistants, and you'll see similarly that, um, I'll just do like special ed assistant, which is one, two, three, the fourth one from the left in the purple. You'll see, the minimum that we were looking right now was the thirteen ninety-six, that moves to seventeen seventy-six. But the maximum moves from nineteen sixty-eight to twenty-one sixty, so not that, that same motion. So I don't want to belabor too much in the data, I just wanted to show you, um, the data behind why there are some of the issues that there are. This is the same for food service. Uh, this is the actual Excel formula that builds out that scale. And so what happens is you plug in your minimum and your maximum. Lots, you know, we've had a lot of discussions even beyond the four plans that I'll share tonight about what if we just did five steps, you know, because part of the small increases is there's nine steps and actually going to be ten. What if we, you know, then you have the issue of, you really build up a lot of people in the, a single step, which also can create some difficulties in itself. So this is the scale that we shared, where we talk about, I called it the sixty-first percent scale with adjustment. So the adjustment is for inflation, because the data that was collected was collected last quarter. Um, the other piece that I'll note, just so that you see, is, um, the kind of shaded blue are, instead of kind of, we don't have the ability to, when people clock in and out, just to have a shift differential automatically add on. So if I'm a evening worker, weekend worker, my pay rate is different. One of the other things we did, if you look on the top under positions, um, for the student support, is we did separate special education assistants from regular education assistants. Because that work is more difficult, those positions are more difficult, um, and so that was a way to try to look at that. And then there's a couple of other pieces here that were requests that I'll talk about going ahead, um, forward. Uh, the other piece, and I know this can be difficult to read, so I will actually just give you a paper copy. Thank you. Um, this is just health insurance comparables. And how does our health insurance compare to the districts that we, for our comparables? And you'll see in not every single instance, but in many instances, um, ours is more favorable, and it just sort of depends. Sorry, I have a little bit of a hand. And I couldn't fit that on one slide, so I'm harder to see there. So it's just, again, providing that information. So there, even once we did that sixty-first percent, so if you go back to this scale, a couple of things we did. One is on some of them, step one was still below fifteen dollars an hour, which was the sub-rate. And so any of those automatically got moved to the next amount. The other thing, if you look on the far right, I always talked about nine steps, and there's a step ten. That's an attempt to deal with that compression that I talked about earlier. So step ten is outside of any max in the comparables, we just took two percent, added it on step nine to get step ten. So those were some adjustments, so it's true, it's not mo- maybe the most, exactly the sixty-first percentile with those adjustments. What's the impact, I talked about this a little bit. It shifts the scale and more staff move back to step one or two. Even by adding step ten, there still are a few staff who would be at step ten in twenty-four, twenty-five. And there is a wider range of percent increases, so when we look at that, um, maybe, I guess if it's the good news, bad news about comparables, some things that I'll use, um, health assistant is one. The, the other, when we looked at comparables, they jumped more than others, so their percent increase was higher than some others. So there's a range of that, a wide range of that. Um, some changes from the prior years, again, um, prior years, it always worked at fifty-first percentile, we wanted to move to the sixty-first with the two percent. And, um, in prior years, the placement to go on the new scale, what happened is you moved on the old scale, you had to get at least a twenty-five percent increase, and then you got put on the new scale. That, we moved to forty cents, because we wanted it to be better, and so that's what happened there. Uh, so this is, um, as you heard, referred a little bit to the stoplight report. And it's just a way to kind of organize some of the requests, and I, I hope I don't confuse everyone, I have like the harder, the darker red and more of the lighter red. Darker red was requests that were made that legally, we're not going to be able to provide even in the future, so that's why I put them there. Um, so for example, um, people wanted to be able to get overtime if they use a sicker vacation day. That's part of employment law. Uh, prorated health insurance deductibles based on salaries. We, there are discrimination tests that we have to do on all of our salary and benefits, that that would make it basically impossible to meet that. And the ability for full-time staff to work events, um, and that just has to do with Fair Labor Standards Act. Now, I would say the red doesn't mean they could not do it, but we would have to pay them the overtime rate. So it just becomes a very, much more costly. Um, the lighter red, those are things that aren't necessarily legally that we couldn't do, or that couldn't happen in the future, but they were not done at this time. So one was an increase in holidays for nine and ten-month employees. Right now, those, and we'll kind of, you'll see it a little bit in the handbook, are at five and seven. And then the elementary assistance, there was a request to move to pay grade five. So if you look, um, you'll see the pay grade there in the top, uh, right now they're at pay grade four. Um, they wanted to be moved into five because of some of the financial work that they do with accounting assistant that, um, didn't happen at this time, and it just, there's, there's a lot of it, I mean, I've, I feel like I've said this before, so I, um, but it's, it's similar, it's just different work. I feel like it's, even a second grade teacher has twenty-eight kids, and they teach reading, and they teach math, and they teach science, and they teach social studies, and they teach kids to wash their hands, I mean, they do all kinds of things. A high school teacher might have a hundred and fifty kids, and they teach all science. It's just different work, but it's not quite to that same degree. Um, the yellow are things where we did some of what was requested, but maybe not fully. So one, what I mentioned was that shift differential for staff working out of schedule. So for example, um, if I'm a PM worker, I get the differential. If I'm a regular day worker and I come in and plow snow, I may end up with overtime, depending on how that works, but there's not a differential there. Uh, the other is moving instructional assistants to grade ba- pay grade four. Uh, we did move them from pay grade two to pay grade three, but not to pay grade four, which is the same as the administrative assistant. And then the green are things that we did do, so one is the sixty-first percentile. Uh, sick leave payout, currently there is none, nothing for that. Uh, there would be a payout of fifty dollars per day for sick time, that's above the maximum, and the maximum is different for different people, depending on when they started. Um, additional longevity for those at twenty-five years of service, right now we have a percent that they get at five, ten, fifteen, twenty years of service. We would add twenty-five years of service with a five percent. This is the only group that gets any of these things in the green, that would, if this is approved. And the other is, which kind of connects to the longevity, is staff when, when they reach the top of the scale, that they shouldn't be frozen. So if I'm at the top of the scale, I talked about, there's a couple people at ten, they get additional one percent on longevity. So for example, I get one percent at five years, if I'm at the top of the scale, I'll get two percent. Or if I get two percent at ten years, I'm at the top of the scale, I get three percent. So it was a way to try to, um, provide something for that. And then just some prior compensation work that had happened in the prior cycle, um, was some insurance was paid for employees that were less than twelve months. So here's options that, um, I'd like the Board to consider. So one is the one we talked about at first, sixty-first percentile. Um, a forty cent minimum after movement on the current scale. And I'll talk a little bit more about each one. Number two is that, but instead of that minimum of forty cents, we look at a minimum of a dollar increase. And it's, it's a little bit different because it's not, it's from their current pay rate. So number one, when you look at it, you, you move, and then you get at least forty cents. Number two, it's a minimum of a dollar from whatever your rate is this year. Number three is just a flat nine percent rate, whatever you're making this year, it's a nine percent increase for each person on whatever their rate is. Uh, number four would be, you move on your step from the current, um, schedule, and then get a nine percent increase. So I'll talk just a little bit about kind of some pros and cons, and some of them with the percentile are similar for each, because they're a different approach. So the forty cent increase, um, obviously it's based on the compensation, um, the comparable data, the special ed parented increase, the pay grade. Some of the cons is, a lot of staff move back to a lower step. There is less difference between kind of a five-plus-year staff person and a new staff person hired. Um, and we do, there are, on that scale, five staff who, if you were capped at the prior year, maybe forty cents is their increase. Looking at the, if there's the minimum dollar increase from your current pay rate, so a lot of them are the same. But there's a little more compression, um, and some staff move a step and some do not. So even, um, Sally had talked about, like, with that, there are a hundred and sixty-seven out of about two hundred and thirty-plus staff that whether we did this one or this one, their rate is the same. Beyond that amount. Uh, looking at just kind of the flat nine percent increase, um, it's easy to understand, everybody can figure it out. All staff get the same percent, step placement doesn't change, your, it is, it, and I, I don't want to say it doesn't matter, but for this purpose, it kind of doesn't matter. It doesn't take into consideration any comparable data, it would be a short-term plan. I mean, you, you, that would be this year, because again, you're not going to necessarily move a step with this one. Um, and there are some staff that will have a lower rate than the draft that was shared with them. Because if you remember back, I talked about, there's a wide variety of percent of increase. And then the final one is looking at, you move a step on twenty-three, twenty-four, and then get nine percent. Again, it's easier to understand, they move a step first, there's a little bit more, I don't want to say disparity, but, um, it's a little different, not everybody gets nine percent, because for example, if you were already capped, if I was step nine last year, I'm just going to get nine percent. If I was step seven, I go to step eight and get nine percent. So there's, there's a little bit of a difference that way. So a lot of information to think about. Um, looking cost out, this just sort of gives you the overall, um, and as you might guess, I mean, the, the most expensive is you move a step, and then you get a nine percent increase. The least expensive is the, you know, sixty-first percentile with the minimum forty cent increase. But, um, it was the goal to, to give the Board some options to think about, and what might be kind of the, the positive or the less positive about those different options. So going forward, uh, any questions about any of this?
Chad, is there a recommendation from your side as far as which would be the best way to go?
I don't have one.
If we were to go with the most expensive one, what will happen in terms of the number of employees we can have?
In all likelihood, we would have some, any resignations going forward. Be replaced, at least some of them.
Some staff would not be able to be replaced, so we would have fewer staff working with kids.
It's twenty-two. And Committee, did you have any recommendations to the Board?
We didn't, we did not vote as a committee. You know, we, we shared our own personal thoughts, I guess, as an individual Board Member.
Okay, Mr. Superintendent?
From my perspective, the one that makes the most sense, if I look at this stoically, if I try to take emotions out of it and look at what's in the best interest of the district over time, the one that likely makes the most sense, given everything that I have heard and seen over the course of the past couple of months, is the sixty-one percent minimum with a one-dollar, uh, guaranteed increase. Uh, it is one that I do believe the district can absorb, based on what I currently know about, uh, school funding formulas and how they work. Uh, it also addresses the need to make adjustments on the other end of the spectrum. And it does, um, help somewhat our employees on the other end of the su-. And it does, um, help somewhat our employees on the other end of the spectrum as well. Ms. Starks, um. What she shared in terms of compression is definitely something that I do worry about. And, um, I do believe that that one makes the most sense currently. But I, and with the caveat that the board should give us direction to revisit scales and how they're used, not just for this particular group, but for all groups in Chippewa Falls Area Unified School District. I do think that given the changes that have occurred over the past four years, certainly uh, regard to our national economy, the impacts of inflation and what's come as a result of post-pandemic. That would be my recommendation to take sixty-one percent of the one-dollar increase with the caveat that the administration should take on the task of, uh, reviewing the scales and looking at other models. To see if, that we can find better ways to do it. Maggie, anything to add from, uh, what Sheri answered?
No, I mean, it's, um, you know, as, as Jenny pointed out, you know, there's, there's pros and cons, um, to each of them. Yeah, we, we value the employees and would we like to give them everything? Yes, but then we have our budget goals as, as well. So just trying to find that medium that we can, that we can, um, you know, budget for and, and not have to cut several employees.
Uh, just so that we're clear, whatever we do here, um, and, and if we continue our three-year cycle, there's increases. I mean, things aren't frozen here, there's increases automatic, is that based on three percent? Or what, what, how does that, is that a step?
I would say if you, if you did the, like, one of the sixty, if you did, for example, the nine percent increase, then I would say that's just this year. And then next year, either you'd have a new scale or you would just vote for another percent increase. Whatever, you know, whatever that would be. Um, the others, you know. The others, you know, every year you'd move a step and, and that would happen that way, um, for either of the sixty-first percentile choices. But any of the, if you just do with the flat nine percent, one, they move and then, then that doesn't really go to the scale. It just is going to be next year, either you'll do a new scale or you'll say, this year we're going to do whatever, five percent or ten, you know, whatever the percent is going to be. And I think that kind of ties into Jeff's comments about looking at the process overall of, you know, tho- those are approaches that some districts take where every year they just look at a CPI-type increase. Um, but that's not what's been done here historically or what's been kind of the board approved process. Sorry, that was a long answer to the short question.
Well, I, I think essentially the piece that might be a little different in the way Chippewa Falls has approached things is there isn't a CPI increase added on to these, you know, it, it's the step process. And, and CPI is what it is, and I think sometimes it's different for, uh, a lot of the public and maybe their own jobs.
One question I have for you is this, um. I like the idea of having a, a little law solution for the issue. Um, where did you come up with the forty cent versus the dollar? You know, kind of why did you choose those two individually?
I would say, I mean, the part of that was just trying to think of what, I don't know, would be palatable, I guess, you know. So for example, when we looked at the twenty-five cent piece, there were issues with that because a lot of people just, again, then that was all they got was twenty-five cents and they could have been frozen. Um, the same is true with the forty cents, but it was the idea, kind of like the sixty-first percentile of wanting to give him more. Um, so we just, you know, that was, again, we had a lot of scenarios we kind of applied to see how they would shake out. Um, and then based on the concerns, because even, it's true with the forty cents, if you were frozen, you, there were, I think, five people that was, what they got was forty cents. So then we talked about, you got at least a dollar.
With the forty cents was that it got to an overall package increase of four point seven percent, which was close to where the CPI currently was.
Yeah, so I think it's part of the listening sessions, it's part of just listening to all the feedback, trying to address some of the issues within the salary schedule that affect a lot of people. Perhaps something a little more palatable for you.
No, that makes sense. I, I, um, my thought tentatively is, you know, we just passed a referendum and I think s- a big spike in pay would be not a great thing to show the tax base. Um, but also, um, in saying that, my concern with doing the dollar over the forty cents would be, um, how it, uh, compresses the pay scale because you don't have enough space in your pay scale. And so my thought would be do the forty cents, it can always be adjusted up, but it becomes very difficult to say we gotta cut staff, you know?
Well, from my perspective, the reason I would say the dollar increase can work is because of the adjustments that we did make administratively in this past year. That additional fifty, fifty-two thousand dol- approximately fifty-two thousand dollars that it increases our budget uh, would be absorbed through the savings that we're going to see in this next year administratively. So it also takes into account our need to be able to be competitive, not only with other school districts, but also with the private sector. Uh, it's one of the main reasons for me why, when they did decide way back when to start looking at it from a sixty-one percent minimum, I thought it was definitely a good idea. Um, you know, I, I think in this first year, you know, the one-dollar increase can be absorbed. Um, I do want to, and I do appreciate you bringing the referendum because one of the things that I have learned over the course of the past couple of months is that a lot of people you know, even though I can't remember a time and I was at presentations with several board members, I don't think any of us ever explained to people that we were going to see an increase in terms of what we were able to do that the referendum allowed for us to maintain where we are, you know, and to help move forward given what we know about the, the condition of state school funding process. So for me, it was one where, you know, I, I still want to remind people that had we not gotten that referendum, we wouldn't even be here talking about increases at all for anybody. The board had already taken action, uh, with administrators to freeze, uh, salaries until we could find out what was going to happen with the referendum. So for me, because of that referendum, which I am grateful to our community for passing, you know, I, I, based, I would look to Chad to confirm what I'm talking about right now. But I think based on everything that I know, that sixty-one percent minimum with a dollar increase allows for us to move forward as a district and still remain competitive.
I would agree with that.
And I would say maybe to answer the question, Dennis, that you didn't ask is kind of why nine percent, why not seven or twelve? Is we, once we did the numbers with the dollar increase, we tried to just find something that was ballparked in that same budgetary amount. Like, what would that look like? So that's the difference between the five hundred and forty-eight thousand and the five hundred and four. That's kind of why it's nine.
And I want to echo what Ms. McKillop stated about, I, I truly care for every single employee in the district. But as the superintendent of a five-thousand-student district, you know, thirty-third largest district in the state of Wisconsin, we cover two hundred and thirty-five square miles. There are multiple things that have to be considered. Doing one thing in one other area has an impact on another, the symbiotics associated with everything that we do, uh, as a school district have to be taken into account. And I want to assure our employees that HR worked hard to try to find a way to seek balance in terms of bringing forward a recommendation to the board that could be fair. And that's a hard thing to do and a lot of work went in to doing just that, you know? Based on what I heard from employees over the past couple of months, I get where they're coming from and I do believe that the dollar increase under that sixty-one percent would be fairer, for lack of a better way to put it.
Jenny, can you go back to the step, the step that we were? I mean, to me, there's dark red and there's dark green, but there, there is balance in a, a group of people that worked hard to listen to what was being asked and, you know, work to, to show that, you know, things we can do and maybe we couldn't do everything right now and some things legally we can't, you know? But I, I think this is the other part of it that we have to remember that is part of what happened. It's not only the scale, the weight, the weight scale, although I know that's really the most important part. And there were some working condition things or, um, benefit things that were looked at and completed.
And one thing not to overlook is the, the first percentile is huge. I feel that way to our staff, but that is a huge transition.
Where we've been for twelve years.
Board members have any additional questions? Otherwise, this is an action item. Board member like to make a motion?
I move that, um, for support staff compensation, that we look at a sixty-first percentage minimum with a minimum of a dollar increase.
Need to save?
Motion by Jasper, is there a second? Was there a question on that?
I, I just wanted to ask, do, can she approve the language items as part of the same motion?
And, yeah. And, and the language items, um, as shared by, um.
It's a revisit compensation for support staff moving forward?
Three-partner. For me. So sixty-one percent minimum with a dollar, a minimum, a sixty-one percent increase with a minimum of a dollar increase to revisit the compensation models and to adopt the new language.
Motion by Jasper, is there a second?
Second.
Second by McKillop, any further discussion? Clerk roll call please.
Sheri Jasper, aye. Peggy McKillop?
Aye.
And this fear? Kate Martino? Sharon McElwalt? Steve Olson?
Aye.
Dave Chet?
Aye. All right, uh, motion carries. Thank you all for your presentation on this.
Thank you. From my experience, this is very difficult, it's always hard and it's always difficult because you can never take things back, so. Thank you for your efforts.
All right, nine point oh-nine is consideration of employee handbook revisions. This is going to be Ms. Stark as well.
So you will see, um, if you look at the chart there, there are some items that were white. Those were just because they were things that I just talked about in the compensation that since they weren't approved, uh, I didn't feel like I should put them green until they got approved. So right now, everything on this sheet would be included. Uh, so some of them are just kind of technical adding. One of the things we found as we went through is if we would add the school year to the cover page, otherwise every year we have to make sure we find, if it was like July first, twenty twenty-three, that all of those were caught. And then we could just have the date of the month because there are many deadlines that are just, um, calendar dates that will then roll over with that. Um, the second, uh, co-curricular pay scale would be added in there. Uh, changing compliance officers, this is just, uh, Brittany Gabbert, um, had resigned and so Sarah Clark is, uh, added. Um, some of, changing any of the new director information to Sarah Denure. Again, updating names on the graphic to, for the harassment discrimination checklist. Uh, there was an update to meal expense reimbursement, so those are included. And some language around flight insurance that was included. Uh, there's, there was new language, a new, uh, remote learning language graphic that had been developed in the district, it's just including that into the handbook. Um, accident insurance in the flex plan, those are no longer offered in the districts, their, their head's been traditionally very low participation, so that's just taking that language out. Uh, new language around post-employment that the employee must be fifty-seven years or older on the first day of their contract. And on that one, we didn't put a date because, um, sometimes school psychs have a different contract start date than a teacher might have, than somebody else might have. So it's, it's whatever that person's first contract day is for the new school year. Um, support staff's pay scale will be added in the language about, um, the additional one percent for those with, um, work, or I'm sorry, the, the additional, the five percent for those with twenty-five or more years of service. Uh, we removed full-time, there was language in there that said that regarding vacation because right now even part-time light housekeepers, because they're twelve-month employees, they get vacation. The sick leave language that we had just talked about. And then for district services for schools, there was some language that doesn't apply to anyone anymore. So that was just removed around, um, retirement language and longevity language. So any questions about any of the handbook changes?
Yep, um, the page seventy-one, adjusting the new language for post-employment benefits.
Yes.
Um, ha- has that been talked about with employees at all?
I, I guess I will say I did not do that, um, that was some of the initial work that was done before I started. Um, so I can tell you I did not do that.
So employees would not know this at this point?
And it, part of it was com- trying to provide clarity because the idea was still, it would look at that, hang on, I'm just trying to click on two things at once.
I do think that it's somewhat been the practice, it's just a matter of formalizing it in the handbook so that it's clear.
So the way, the way I read it, and so perhaps it's just I'm reading it incorrectly, um, and I'll just use myself because it's simple, right? Um, my, the first day of my contract, the year I retired, I was fifty-six. So that means I could not have retired the year I retired with this language.
So what was?
That would be right.
And so.
The idea is someone wouldn't retire mid-contract.
But I couldn't have retired, I, so I, so my birthday is in April, so I turned fifty-seven in April, which meant, based on the way we've always done it, I was eligible to retire. But this wouldn't allow me to do that?
You were already fifty-seven, so you're fifty-seven, so if you were choosing to work another year, and let's say the start,
Yeah.
the start of your contract was August twenty-sixth, you were already fifty-seven, so you're eligible to retire. But if your birthday was.
April.
April, you would have to work the rest of that school year.
But you can't retire in April.
Okay, got it.
The idea, so, you know, I think, again, it's been the practice that if I have a birthday that falls within the school year. you know, February, whatever it is, I'm not able to retire on that birthday. And I think, obviously, even since I've been here, sometimes there's extenuating circumstances or certain things happen that can request board approval, but as per the handbook, you, the idea is someone isn't eligible for those benefits if they retire kind of mid-year. Then you'd wait once you turn fifty-seven till whenever the new contract year started.
Would there, would there be, I'm, I'm worried about the whole July, August thing because you have people out there that have birthdays in July and August and they have been looking at this retirement day for years and now they're like, you know, what does this mean to me? So I mean, would, I lean towards like this, when students are here, like either the first, the first, you know, day of student learning or September first or something versus, you know, while you have this position, it's July first, or this position is August nineteenth. And then I worry about the calendar committee having to take that into effect when they're looking at professional development because one year I have professional development, the year, the month, or the week of August twenty-sixth. So if my birthday was on the nineteenth, I can retire. Well, the next year we have professional development on the eighteenth, so now I can't, so I worry about those.
You do have that same issue with the start of the school year as well. Because it's not always on the first, this year it's on the fifth.
Well, that's why I'm wondering if it's like a stu-, you know, when you're starting to count student minutes or, you know, how.
I mean, I think, obviously, you can do it however you want to provide your parameters. You know, the idea was, again, to clean up, and I would say like in my experience, that's been more of the practice, but, you know, I don't, I can't speak to what's been your practice here as well. You know, and maybe if you've, if people have been able to retire as long as they have a birthday before kids start, I just wasn't aware of that, but... You know, I think it's part of, part of the idea is just wanting to have, you know, you still have language about they need to provide, you still have all of those kinds of things that would allow you to be able to have, for example, it's not like you have to wait till then to fill a position or those types of things. I just think you want to be consistent and kind of clear so that people understand. So this was an attempt to make it more clear, but maybe it made it more clear in a way that is palatable.
Yeah, and I can't answer whether or not it was discussed with employees. First, my impression is that it possibly did while her, uh, her predecessor was here. However, what I do know is this is my fifth school district to work in and there has never been language created yet surrounding retirement dates where somebody doesn't have an issue.
There's always going to be someone on each side of.
Yours is a, in my mind, yours is a simple example with an April, where you finish your school year and you retire. Let's say your birthday is on September tenth. Well, why did you choose September first then? You know, now I have to work the entire year. You know, it, there's issues surrounding whatever date that you pick.
You know, might I, might I suggest that because we have employees that maybe were eligible to retire next year and now aren't? You know, because we don't, because we don't know.
Based on what though?
Um, just based on the new language, and I don't, I don't know that that's the case, but I mean, is there a way to provide a grandfather opportunity for a few years or something like that? You know, I, just because, I mean, I, I don't have a person in mind, but it, but I just think if there was someone that knew they could retire because it was September first, right? I think that's where we've been operating lately.
I mean, I would say you would just not include that change, but you'd operate under whatever parameters you operated under before. Kind of looking at you because I don't know what.
Do we not have any parameters before?
I believe the practice was that people did not, like, were not able to retire. And I, but what I don't know is what was the date? And I don't know how often it came up where someone had kind of, typically, again, if they have an issue like the September tenth, they still are going to have to go to the board for a special.
Yeah, I, neither of us administered that, so my, my belief was the practice would have been, you know, it's, it's the first day of work, so if in-service was whatever day it might be, then you turn.
It shifted.
You didn't turn fifty-seven until after that, you worked that school year and then you were able to retire.
So we could approve this language with the understanding that this board would probably be very understanding if someone came to us in the next couple of years with that exact issue that you're talking about?
And that would also work.
Employees know that they can do that.
I think our HR person would be able to.
I have talked to people, I mean, I've brought people forward.
I've brought employees to that before personally. I would assume the employee would come to you and say, well, I was planning on retiring here and now this is saying I can't. And then you could explain to them.
If there's an option.
Or tell them that they can.
I mean, it's just one of those things that I know there's no ill intent. You know, it's another one of those, are there going to be unintended consequences, right?
It was an attempt to provide clarity for everyone.
And I totally understand that, so.
Not so much understanding though for the employee that's twenty-five right now and they were looking thirty years into the future.
They have a long ways to plan for this.
Just don't move to June seventeen.
Pursue.
Board members have any other questions about the language? Recommended action is to approve the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five employee handbook revisions as presented. But if a board member would like to make any other motion, that's fine too. Do we have any motions?
I move to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five employee handbook revisions as presented.
Motion by Fear, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Olson, any further discussion? What do we do, a roll call on this one?
Dylan Sphere?
Aye.
Steve Olson?
Aye.
Sherry Jasper?
Aye.
Dave Martino? Sharon McElwalt?
Peggy McKillop?
Aye.
Dave Check?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, Ms. Stark for your presentation. Ten, communicating with the board, ten point oh one is secondary school behavior report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Check. The board was provided with this comprehensive report for your review and provides crucial insights into student behavior trends and the effectiveness of our disciplinary strategies over the past year, which were partially highlighted by Ms. McMasters in her report. At Chippewa Falls Middle School, we've seen significant progress. Total behavioral incidents have decreased by twenty-eight percent since last year and forty-five percent over two years. Major behaviors have shown an impressive sixty-seven percent reduction over five years. Notably, eighty-three point seven percent of our middle school students did not receive a single behavioral referral this year. Additionally, our staff's commitment to positive reinforcement is evident. With eighty-five staff members, there are writing one thousand two hundred and forty-five positive referrals, reaching seven hundred and sixty-three families. However, CFMS does recognize that a small percentage of students account for a significant portion of behavioral incidents, with seven point seven percent of students responsible for eighty point two percent of behaviors. This highlights the need for targeted, targeted interventions. At Chi High, we've seen improvements in non-attendance-related behaviors, averaging only three non-attendance majors per day. Recidivism rates for out-of-school suspensions are also declining. However, attendance remains a significant challenge. Our senior class dropped below a ninety percent attendance rate for the first time and overall attendance is below pre-pandemic levels. These findings reflect the district's commitment to data-driven decision-making and transparent communication. They underscore the dedicated efforts of our staff in creating supportive learning environments and implementing innovative approaches to student discipline. Based on these results, we've four strategies for building on our successes and addressing ongoing challenges, particularly in high school attendance, which does include an upcoming, um, meeting between the county and, uh, superintendents and other school officials. Hopefully before end of July. Our goal is to ensure we're meeting the evolving needs of all of our students in today's educational landscape. That's the end of my report. Are there any questions I can answer?
I just find it interesting that when we talk about the, you know, seven percent or forty percent of the behaviors and, you know, that's, well, one point eight, our response for forty percent, seven point seven for eighty percent of our behaviors, it's just fewer.
One of the things that I was glad to give this report is just so that I can reinforce in our, for our families and for the board, for our staff, for our community at large, the vast, vast majority of our kids are really, really good. You know, a lot of the flack that we catch in regard to being a public school to me are, they're just, it's basically caused by a small percentage of, of our population. And, you know, I, one of the things for the upcoming school year that is part of presentation to staff is for us to get better at promoting what we do po-, in terms of positives, that we've got to help ourselves out in that regard. You know, even in two thousand and twenty-four, even with social media, even with TV ads, radio ads, you know, you're seeing on TV, you know, for school choice and everything else. The way we're going to get people to better understand why we're such a good system is going to be through word of mouth. That our students are going to have to start going home, explaining to their parents how good their day is in our settings. And, you know, the more positives have got to be shared in that format, that it's not going to be through TV, it's not going to be through, you know, radio. That we're going to have to get better at our kids going home and telling their parents how good they got.
You know, what I think is interesting is when we look at the, uh, demographic breakdown, you know, one of the things that we have to focus on is making sure that, that things are, um, equitable and, and when we look at this, this percentage where you look at the students, say the, the non-white students are twelve percent of the population, twenty percent of the ODRs, that's actually not that bad of a demographic. When you look at special education, students are nineteen percent of the population, thirty-three percent. Again, that's something we need to work on as well. But the thing that we're not working on at all, and we're not, we're told we're not supposed to, free and reduced lunch. Those students are forty-one percent of the population, that's seventy-one percent of the ODRs. So why are we talking about what it is? This is all income-based, I mean, that's a thirty percent differential. Fifty-nine percent of the students are not on, on, uh, on reduced lunch, that's twenty-nine percent of the ODRs. That's, that's a huge disparity of all these things. I just find that, that interesting because we're not focusing on that at all.
I, I would actually like to see the high school laid out this way as well, just to, to see if there's a shift from middle school to high school in the behavior data by demographic.
Okay, I will let, I will let them know. I, I did appreciate that, you know, worked with both the middle school and the high school over the course of the year to be ready to do this for the board in relation to the twelve that just came out, based on some previous conversations that we had with the board. I, you know, the strides that have been made are fantastic. Yes, there are definitely challenges, um, that need to be addressed, but a lot of their work, particularly, uh, where restorative practices are concerned and being more mindful of, well, more mindful practices on the part of our administration when dealing with discipline issues are paying off, is getting better. My biggest worry right now, a lot of it too, is, you know, how many of those kids that are attendance problems are also more albums while they're here? That would be one of those things where I, where I would need more information as well. And I will say it on camera and be pointed that, that we're going to go back to the county again and we're going to need greater assistance from the county in terms of helping us address truancy rates. Some adjustments are going to have to be made.
Yeah, and some of the data that you put together might be able to help those discussions too. Probably is just as much of a direct correlation as there is on the, the income differentials. All right, any other questions for Superintendent Holmes? All right, thank you for that report, Mr. Holmes, on the secondary school behavior report. Next, under ten point oh two is the enrollment update. Mr. Drowbridge?
Thank you. Uh, what you have here is our status of current enrollment as of last Wednesday. Uh, this is a, uh, a worksheet that changes daily as students enter and exit our district. There's a couple of highlights here. Uh, it is what we probably would have expected for this time of year. A couple of areas, especially at the elementary, that we're keeping an eye on, our kindergarten at Homestead, uh, first grade at Southview and second grade at Hillcrest. Those are numbers that are a little above our parameter. Yet, if an extra section was added, would be low, would be below our targeted parameter. But, um, obviously, we would hope that if those numbers morph one way or another somewhat organically, that leads us to a better decision in that regard. And a caution I will throw out here, uh, when you look at our total numbers, don't be too concerned with that right now. Uh, the open enrollment data rolls on July first, so you'll see this look pretty similar to what we would have expected, uh, for this year. A couple, just kind of bigger picture items, uh, there, we're bringing this to you starting in June because it's something we'll keep an eye on over the next few months, obviously, but there's a, a couple of big things in play here as we approach the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This will be the year that we'll update our applied population lab study. That'll focus on historical demographics, but also growth in the area, changes to our demographics and what that might mean for us as a school system. Uh, we'll also be upgrading our master facility plan, uh, in this next school year as well. One of the things that, uh, has gained a, I think, a considerable amount of traction in terms of discussion is elementary attendance areas. Uh, it, it's becoming more and more necessary that we probably convene a formal committee, uh, including more people to, to review. Whether that'll be early or late in the school year, I think the discussion around doing that, uh, will continue. Part of the, the goal in looking at attendance areas is to balance class size, but also factor in neighborhood growth changes demographically to our district, but also too, from a use of space perspective in maximizing the space that we have available to us, looking at the quality of space and the needs for those learning environments as well. So Jeff, I don't know if you want to add anything to that or?
Well, I do actually, and, and I think, um, my recommendation to the board in that regard will be that, um, I would bring a formal recommendation to the board after you're able to review the, uh, third Friday of September. Finalization of, so I figured a recommendation will likely be coming to the board in October. But given everything that I currently know about populations in each of our elementary schools, we definitely are a district that needs to look at, at our elementary attendance and possibly redraw. So I do want the public and everybody to have fair warning in that regard because it is one of the most difficult things that school districts of our size encounter. People get emotionally attached to their neighborhood elementary schools and when we start talking about the possibility of children, it can be a very difficult thing and challenging thing to do, so. For me, it's just not a one-month process. It'll very only be one that takes anywhere from three to four months to work through.
Board members have any other questions? Mr. Drowbridge? Mr. Holmes? Next, this is ten point oh three, Viola, technical changes. And again, Mr. Holmes?
Uh, yes, the board was provided with the technical changes. Uh, yes, the board was provided with the technical changes that need to occur. Again, these are things that get changed, um, as a result of. They are not contextual, contextual changes. They are just minor technical inward changes that take place.
Board members have had a chance to look through, any questions or concerns regarding the changes? That is information alone. If there are no questions regarding, then we'll move on to ten point oh four, discussion of board activities. Uh, June twelfth, we had the ad hoc committee meeting and we've heard the notes from that. June thirteenth, we had the policy committee meeting and we heard the notes and the discussion from that. And June nineteenth, the governance committee meeting, we heard the notes from that. Did we do anything else this last month? It seems like we did, we had a meeting since graduation. Wow, time flies, so we haven't really had a done, had a whole lot of things, we've got a lot of things coming up. So, um, unless anybody has anything to add of the things that we want to point out that we did do. Have a discussion of this meeting, board members have any comments about this meeting? Love point oh two is future agenda items and upcoming events, we've got a few. Uh, first of all, the communication committee meeting is going to meet time to be determined. Uh, the Northern Wisconsin State Fair, we've uh, got the signup sheet that's been passed around, uh, July tenth to the fourteenth. Uh, July twenty-third is the regular board meeting. August first is the CISA ten annual convention. The CISA ten representative this year is. August tenth is the Pure Water Days Parade, let Kathy Strucker participate. September twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth is Wisdom Sharing two thousand twenty-four at the Alexis Royal Sinesta Hotel in Seattle, Washington. Uh, Sherry and Peggy are registered for that.
And I would like to put on the board's radar as well, particularly, uh, policy committee. Uh, Angela and I met today with Dave Lane and, and Chris also, she attended virtually. We met with Dave Lane from Neola, Title IX changes are coming. And the board will need to vote at their July board meeting regarding, uh, the changes to the policies that will need to occur. I would like to give the board a heads up in that regard, that there's already been, uh, court activity in several of the other circuit courts in the federal system where those things have been put on hold. But as of yet, nothing has reached the Seventh Circuit, which is out of Chicago and impacts us. So based on the information from Neola at this juncture, um, we are, um, being advised that as a district, because of how it was posted by the Department of Education, that those changes to Title IX will be treated as law at this juncture, which they have the ability as a federal agency to do. So I just want to give the board a heads up that there are some significant changes in terms of, uh, Title IX and its impact on our employees and our students. It's gonna be a, not only our administrators, our Title IX coordinator, Title IX investigators, but our entire staff is going to have to have training here in the upcoming fall surrounding those changes in Title IX. So it's gonna be a pretty heavy lift, along with Act twenty.
Do we have a date for the, uh?
Band dates.
Welcome back.
August twenty-sixth.
August twenty-sixth.
And yes, you do have to welcome.
Okay.
Or assign the designated.
I'll sign designated to Sherry. All right, I think that covers everything, uh, then we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Well, I would like to let you know, give you a fair warning, you may want, uh, our keynote speaker for opening day this year is Dr. Lana Cook, who I didn't realize is a graduate.
Yep.
Homestead Elementary.
Homestead, uh, you know.
I was a science teacher.
I was made aware of all that, that she apparently has been here in the past, but she has now, since the last time she was here, she's done even helping people develop their potential, and that's what the message is going to be about.
They have a local Christmas tree fire, her daughter is an excellent chiropractor.
Lana.
Lana.
Well, she's the one speaking.
Lana.
Yeah, that's the one. Oh, okay.
Years, three years.
Lana's gonna be the, and I'm looking forward to, based on my conversation with their, their topic and their knowledge of those things, it should be a great presentation.
All right, then we are looking for a motion to adjourn.
I would like to motion that we adjourn.
Motion by Olson, very powerful motion, is there a second?
Polite.
Second.
Second by Fear.
I would like to.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries, we stand adjourned. Thank you all.